Welcome, everybody. Before we start our meeting today, we are here to swear in a new counselor. Welcome, Nick Cameron, to City Council Chambers. I know you've been in here before, but welcome to your seat and your role. And we have Justice Key is back again to perform yet another swearing in of yet somebody else. She has a personal and close connection to a nose, but so goes the process. So invite you up and proceed, yeah.
Living in North Gramble is great, but I really do miss everybody. So it's my great pleasure to swear in the newest city councilor tonight, who has yet another connection with the Key family. I know Alexander was at your wedding, you were at Alexander's wedding, you've been at my house, just kind of another song. So you might as well just come forward and get it over with. So I'm going to pull this out. Oh, what am I going to do? Put my glasses on? Sure. It's getting old. Yes, thanks, Mark. It's getting old. The socks are breaking. We don't have a microphone. All right, so Nick, I'll hold that up in front of you. And you're going to do two, right?
Yes, sure.
Okay, good. All right, Bible. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks. Okay, do you remember the Bible? Or you can even hold it so I can get the...
Sure.
...it's gone.
I, Nick Cameron of Somerside Prince County, do hereby solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of counselor for the city of Somerside, to which I have been elected, and that I shall diligently, faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability, perform the duties of office and abide by the Municipal Government Act and all other acts, regulations, bylaws applicable to the city of Somerside for so long as I hold said office. I do hereby further solemnly swear that I will abide by the Municipal Government Act and regulations and all other acts, regulations and bylaws for so long as I hold said office.
That's quite a mouthful.
It is. I try to do it all in one breath.
Would you sign right there, please? And I think actually you are, this is the book of office, so we're going to give you section, this one under section 80, which says almost the same thing.
I'll take a breath this time.
All right.
I, Nick Cameron of Somerside Prince County, do hereby swear that I am duly qualified, as required by law, for the office of counselor for the city of Somerside, to which I have been elected, and that I shall diligently, faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability, perform the duties of office and abide by the Municipal Government Act and all other acts, regulations and bylaws applicable to the city of Somerside for so long as I hold said office. Much easier the second time.
There you see, sir, second time around. There you go. You can sign right there. Ah, lefty.
Yes.
Great. I'll sign after. Thank you, Nick.
Thanks, Nancy. Thank you very much, Nancy. And thank you to all of Nick's family who's here today. You guys can stay for the planning board meeting if you want. You can stay as long as you want, of course, or you can head out. It's totally up to you. Okay, so we're going to get started with the regular proceedings for the evening. So I'm going to call to order the planning board meeting for June 6, 2023, here at 5:16 PM on June 6, 2023. Before we move forward with item two, approval of agenda, I'm going to take liberty here and give Nick the opportunity to say a few words, Nick, if you want to say anything, as your first comments here. Counsel, Counselor Glant, you might want to show him how to use the mic.
I already know how to do it.
Oh, he's already got it. We're off to a great start. You're way ahead of where I started.
I was briefed by Sandra earlier. She was very detail oriented. Well, thank you for having me, and thank you to everyone who made it possible for me to be here, my family for always supporting me, and I look forward to getting to know everyone and learning lots over the next three and a half years. Thanks.
Thanks, Nick. Really happy to have you with us.
I can't shut it off now.
You push the button. It's okay. You'll notice I often mute everyone by mistake, so take no offense. So now we'll move in with the regular planning board agenda, just for Nick and for members of the public who are here with us today and those who are joining virtually on YouTube. This is a planning board meeting, although all of council is at the meeting. So with respect to the voting decisions for planning board, will sort of leave the approving agenda and these types of things happen with planning board members. So first, I'll just call a motion for one of the planning board members to approve the agenda as presented. Counselor Snow, second, Counselor Duran, all planning board members in favor of the agenda as presented. Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda will proceed as set out. Begin with the land acknowledgement, as we do with all meetings here at City of Somerside, where we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is the unceded Mi'kmaq territory. Abogway is covered by the historic treaties of peace and friendship. We pay our respects to the indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years, past, present, and future. Land acknowledgement is a small but meaningful way of showing respect and honoring the indigenous peoples of the land upon which we live. It is also a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and an important step on the pathway towards reconciliation. Moving on to item four, any conflict of interest declaration. Hearing none, we will move on to item five. At this point, I'll hand this over to Counselor Duran.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I will apologize in advance. I'm getting over a cold, or maybe just getting under one. I don't know. Hopefully, it'll be done soon, but if I sort of start sniffling a little bit, I might hand things over to another member of the planning board. We will start strong. So first item is restricted use application for 433, 437, and 447 Water Street. Purpose of the application is to allow a medical office and retail space as a restricted use in the high-density residential R4 zone, and a restricted use requires council approval. Background, an application was received from 102913PEI Inc., Tyler McDonald, for PID number 301234 and PID number 301259. The lot has now been consolidated. It is lot 22-1. This application will require City Council approval to allow a medical office and retail space as a restricted use in the high-density residential R4 zone. Report, under section 5.7 of the zoning bylaw, when planning board reviews a restricted use, it has to consider the following general criteria as applicable. A, conformity with all requirements of this bylaw, zoning bylaw. Staff comment, a medical and retail office use conforms with the bylaw, section 8.5, subject to council approval for a restricted use approval in the high-density residential R4 zone. The current zoning high-density residential R4 does not change. One of the purposes of the restricted use designation is to accommodate unique uses, where a zoning amendment, rezoning, would result in undesirable land uses due to the as-of rights in that zone. The proposed restricted use is permitted in other zones. If the property were to be rezoned to one of these zones to accommodate the restricted use being sought, it would result in other undesirable land uses in the area. The specific uses can be achieved by designating the property as a restricted use, allowing only the restricted use. The permitted uses of the high-density residential R4 zone are noted in this report. The current zoning high-density residential R4, purpose of this zone is to provide a high-density housing in the form of apartments, as well as housing in the form of single-family, semi-detached duplex dwellings, row house, townhouse, and other compatible uses. Permitted uses in the R4 zone, subject to bylaw requirements, we just mentioned many of those, the single-family dwelling, semi-detached dwelling, apartment building, boarding house, accessory building, assisted living, duplex dwelling, group home, childcare facility medium, rooming house, row house, townhouse, nursing care facility, community care and nursing home, or social services agency. Discretionary uses, subject to council approval, tourism establishment, tourist home and inn, which also requires conditional use approval, and conditional uses in the R4 would be home-based business, tourism establishment, B and B and vacation rental property, or secondary suite. B, conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the proposed restricted use would conform to the official plan, section 5.12, as the land use will remain as residential. The restricted use designation is to accommodate unique uses, where an official plan amendment would result in undesirable land uses. Should the restricted uses cease to operate for 12 months, the restricted use lapses, and the zoning remains as residential and can be utilized as such. The restricted use applies to the property, not the applicant. C, suitability of the site for the proposed development. Staff comment, the site is suitable for this development, as the site has access to a main street, Water Street, and city infrastructure. D, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses. Staff comment, the property is zoned high-density residential R4. The restricted use, medical office and retail space is compatible with surrounding commercial and residential land uses. A portion of the property has been utilized as single-family, previously zoned medium-density residential R3, and another portion of the property has been utilized as a retail store, scooter depot, and prior to that, a bingo games venue, previously zoned as neighborhood commercial C3 for many years. Pardon me. As per section 8.5, part E, council may attach terms and conditions to the restricted use approval. Council may revoke a restricted use approval for a violation to any term or condition attached to an approval, subject to a recommendation from the planning board. Pardon me again. Okay. E, any comments from residents or other interested persons? A public meeting was held on May 18, 2022. I think that means 2023. The public meeting notice was advertised in The Guardian in the May 4 edition. Forty letters were mailed to 36 property owners. Staff comment, at the public meeting, Tyler McDonald, the applicant, provided an overview of the development. The applicant obtained the land, completed the rezoning to R4 to provide much-needed housing. Nancy Ullahan, 438 North Market Street, asked why the developer wasn't using existing buildings downtown for the commercial use. Mr. McDonald expressed the need for smaller retail spaces in the city. Most of the existing commercial buildings in the downtown are too large and have not been maintained to a suitable level for new businesses. This property is a good fit, as it is located on an arterial, higher-traffic-volume street, and the use will serve the area as well as the city. A pharmacy is proposed for this location. The hours of operation are expected to be no later than 5:30 PM. Bob Ullahan, 438 North Market Street, was concerned about headlights shining into the abutting neighbors and wanted to know if a fence was required. Could the fence be eight feet instead of six feet? Deputy Mayor Snow echoed the concern of a possible nuisance to abutting neighbors as a result of headlights shining into the abutting neighbor's yards. The development officer received a call from Morris Casely, owner of 467 Water Street. He wanted to clarify on the restricted use and stated he was not opposed to the application. The relevant issues/concerns raised at the public meeting are addressed throughout this report. F, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development, and any projected infrastructure requirements. Staff comment, the existing water, sewer, road, storm drainage services are adequate for the proposed development. There is adequate onsite parking, and on-street parking is available on Water Street as well. There are ample parklands in the area to support this development. G, impacts from the development on pedestrian, vehicular access and safety, and on public safety generally. Staff comment, the proposed restricted use has no impact on pedestrian or vehicular access. There is a sidewalk on the north side of Water Street and the boardwalk on the south side of Water Street to serve the pedestrian traffic. H, compatibility of the development with environmental, scenic, and heritage resources. Staff comment, not applicable. I, impacts on city finances and budgets. Staff comment, this application does not impact city finances or budgets. J, other matters as specified in this bylaw. Staff comment, aside from the restricted use being sought, screening, landscaping, and fencing is not a requirement of the bylaw, where a R4-zoned property is abutting another residential use, i.e. R3, which applies to the development, or which applies to this development. At the time this property was rezoned, staff confirmed fencing was not required. Fencing is required where downtown, C2, C3, M1, and M2 zones are abutting residential uses. The type of screening, landscaping, and fencing required is dependent upon the specific zone abutting the residential use. The uses allowed in the downtown, C2, C3, M1, and M2 zones are varied, i.e. drive-through restaurant to an asphalt plant, so fencing is warranted in these cases. In this case, the use being sought is specific, medical office and retail space, with operating hours expecting to be no later than 5:30 PM. It is likely there will be no impact on the neighbors as a result of the restricted use being proposed. And K, other matters as considered relevant. Staff comment, the allowable fence height in a residential zone is 2.5 meters, sorry, 2 meters, 6.5 feet, in all yards except front yards, where 0.7 meters, 2.4 feet is permitted. Staff review, staff support the application from 102913PEI Inc., Tyler McDonald, for PID number 301234 and PID number 301259, consolidated lot of 22-1, to allow a medical office and retail space as a restricted use in the high-density residential R4 zone. Council may attach terms and conditions to the restricted use approval. As per section 5.10, part B3 of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. Planning board recommendation, the application from 102913PEI Inc., Tyler McDonald, for PID number 301234 and PID number 301259, consolidated lot 22-1, to allow a medical office and retail space as a restricted use in the high-density residential R4 zone be approved, to be approved by council, moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Snow?
I think I will start with thanking Tyler for developing in Somerside. On its face, there's lots of positive things with this application. When I think of a pharmacy and medical office in that location with the residents in that area, we have a lot of aging population. There's lots of benefits to the neighbors. I have to say, I'm a little bit confused when I read through this. So we say in one instance where a fence is not required because it's an R4 zone, we're putting in a restricted use that would fall under... So if this was strictly pharmacy, medical office in downtown, what would it fall under? What zoning? C1, C2, M1, M2, M3?
It could be either, it would be C2.
C2. So we say up here in the top where it's R4-zoned property, it's not required, but we're putting in there a C2 or C3 use on the ground floor, where anywhere else we would require fencing, but because it's an R4 and we're getting restricted use, it's not required?
So if the property was zoned C2, then yes, a fence would be required?
So we're allowing a restricted use, but not putting the same implications on it as we would any other C2 property if it wasn't? It just seems a little... Yeah, it seems backwards to me, to be honest, because we're basically saying, yes, we want to go ahead with the C2 property, but we're taking away the restrictions that we thought were needed in any other property that's C2. And I know we can attach... We can attach, what am I trying to say here? We can attach conditions to it, but I just think, I think it's something we should look at as a municipality. It doesn't make sense to me that we would allow a C2 in one area, even though it's R4 zone, but it's a conditional use, or restricted use we're allowing, and we're basically throwing that out the window. So I just don't understand how that... Am I making sense? Because it makes sense to me when I read through it and I see C2 anywhere else, we would require a fence. All of a sudden, we're putting it into a residential zone, R4, and then, no, we don't require a fence because it's R4, but we're allowing C2. Personally, I think it's great for the area. I think the development's going to be great to see it happen. Looking forward to having a pharmacy in the area, medical office, but I think we should treat it like we would any other C2 property, because that's what it's going to be. We're going to have a medical office. It actually says here, and it can be corrected if I'm wrong, but my understanding is there's a possibility of a drive-through at that location. And if that's the case, it actually says in here, i.e. drive-through restaurant, or which I assume would fall under any other drive-through as well. So there's lots of things that connect to the exact thing in the downtown we'd be requesting to have a fence for. So I would hope, as a planning board, we would recommend putting a fence as part of the conditions if we move forward.
No, I completely agree with Deputy Mayor Snow. I believe there should be a fence there, but for us to put something in to, as one of the conditions, one of the things that we don't do is if a developer is asked to put in a fence, then they're not asked to maintain it. And we're dealing with one now that was allowed probably 15, 20 years ago, and it's fallen down, and they have no intentions of replacement, right? So I think it's got to be, what Corey's saying is, it's got to be very clear, one way or the other. I see on the drawing there, it says fencing is per bylaw. So I'm wondering why that's there, and we're saying it's not required.
Would there be, I know we're talking about fencing, would there be an appetite, even from Tyler's here, the applicant, instead of fencing, maybe vegetation or shrubbery, or like, would that be something that might sort of offset the... You know, I mean, I feel like the whole idea of the desire for a fence is to block out the unwanted light or whatever, like...
Well, I think it probably serves a few purposes. It would be block out maybe lights, whatever, the coming and going, but just the added busyness of a commercial area. There's a reason why we, and it's just a question. It doesn't make sense to me that we would say, in this area, we want a fence, but then we allow a restricted use for the exact same purpose, but there's no fence. So that, it makes zero sense to me, actually. So either we shouldn't have fence requirements in the other C2 zones, or we feel strong enough that it's a requirement because it's C2 use, and we should have a fence. So if that's the requirement, then we proceed with a fence.
Okay, so we can, as a planning board, recommend to move this to council, and at that time, we can put the stipulation in if council feels that there should be one at that final, the final meeting, I guess, where things are voted on by council. Tyler, if you wanted to add, by all means.
Thank you. Tyler McDonald, just for the record. So appreciate your comments. I just, what I see is a gap here, obviously, within what you guys are doing. I just spoke to my business partner. We will move forward on a fence, but we'll pick the fence and we'll come up with a solution there in order to... there in order to, you know, deal with the the lights and and the situation here, get this done. So let's give that. I mean, we're not putting an eight-foot fence or anything. We stick within, you know, a four to six feet, something that works there generally, and probably something that, you know, I haven't done my research, but something low maintenance, like you're saying, like, we plan on owning this building, maybe we've got to go with wood for cost, but certainly we want to look at, you know, the big thing is segregating that property, right? So it may not be a complete paneled fence, but, you know, we want to look at options as we're going to hold the building and keep it, right, long term. So that's what I would say our commitment is right now to move this forward tonight. So, yeah. Now, I will say this, some citizens want it, some citizens don't, but but it was kind of fifty-fifty in the in the meeting, but I think I think ultimately, if if everyone's happy with that, that's that's how Paul and I would like to move forward on this. Questions? Thanks.
Okay, so, sounds good. Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Just a quick question for staff on the parking there. There's thirty-six spots. I think that includes the street parking. Is that a maximum or minimum, or how does that? What are the required parking spots for the the lot per unit?
There is one space required for each of the units in the building, and then, depending upon the square footage of the commercial space, we calculate the number of parking spaces required for the commercial component.
And does that include the the six on the street? That's the.
They're city parking, but they're they're not designated for that particular building.
Okay, I'll just read the planning board recommendation one more time, and then we'll, planning board can can vote. The application from one oh two nine one three P E I Inc., Tyler McDonald for P I D number three oh one two three four and P I D number three oh one two five nine, consolidated lot twenty-two dash one, to allow a medical office and retail space as a restricted use in the high-density residential R four, be recommended to be approved by council. So moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. All members of the planning board in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried, and that final decision will be made at the June, I believe, regularly scheduled council meeting, June nineteenth. So that's where all of council will vote on the application. Second item, recommendation for one oh nine Patrick Drive, official planning, pardon me, official plan and zoning amendment. The purpose of the official plan and zoning amendment is to allow single-family duplex or semi-detached dwelling. The applicant is proposing to change the use of the land from institutional use vacant lot to residential use, single-family duplex semi-detached housing. Background, an application was received from P E I Housing Corporation for a portion of P I D number six four two nine zero zero to amend the city official plan from institutional land use to residential land use and the city zoning bylaw from institutional I zone to low-density residential R two zone. A public meeting was held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and council gave first reading on the same date. Report, under section five point seven of the zoning bylaw, when planning board reviews a zoning bylaw amendment, it has to consider the following general criteria as applicable. Under section eight point four of the Parks and Green Space Plan, the criteria of B, C, E, G, and H must be considered. A conformity with all requirements of this bylaw. Staff comment, the proposed development can slash will conform to the R two development standards. B conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the rezoning conforms to the official plan as the future land use plan, Schedule B, of the official plan designates the land use as residential. The proposed amendments have no impact on the Parks and Green Space Plan. C suitability of the site for the proposed development. Staff comment, the site is suitable for development as the lot has access and can connect to city infrastructure. D compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses. Staff comment, the subject property abuts three existing land uses. The land use to the immediate east is zoned agricultural. The land use to the west and south is institutional, and the land use to the north is residential. The proposed use is compatible with the surrounding land uses. E any comments from residents or other interested persons? Staff comment, a public meeting was held on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. The public meeting notice was advertised in the May fourth edition of The Guardian. Nine letters were mailed to nine property owners. The tenants are only notified if the property owner shares the notification information the owner received. Jason Doyle, representing P E I Housing, provided an explanation for the application indicating the land is intended for family dwellings, affordable housing. At the public meeting, Sandra Stewart of one twenty-five Patrick Drive spoke at the meeting and asked why she hadn't received a letter as she was within the notification area. She also asked if the province had considered selling the land to Hillcrest Housing. Mike Martin, seven oh five Water Street East, spoke requesting clarity on the purpose of the rezoning and indicated if the province was interested in selling the property, he would be interested in acquiring the subject property. No written comments were received by the development officer regarding this application. The development officer received a call from Marcia Matheson requesting clarity on the application. The development officer provided an explanation of the intended use and encouraged Marcia to attend the public meeting to hear the applicant's explanation of the development. F adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services, city parking and parklands for accommodating the development, and any projected infrastructure requirements. Staff comment, the change from institutional to R two represents a decrease in water and sewer loading on the city's water supply and sewer treatment systems. Patrick Drive has water and sewer mains that front the newly created lots. All costs associated with the servicing the new lots will be the developers. Patrick Drive is adequate to accept the traffic, and the existing ditches will handle the storm drainage from this development. Electrical system can accommodate single-family dwellings or duplex on the subject property on Patrick Drive. There is an existing utility pole in the middle of the new lot road frontage that the developer would need to work around or relocate at their expense if desired. Parkland dedication is not required as there is no major subdivision of lands. G impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety and on public safety generally. Staff comment, the access for the new properties will meet city standards. The property access is a six, is sixty meters from the edge of the travel lane on Glassby Avenue. H compatibility of the development with environmental scenic and heritage resources. Staff comment, the developer will have to create a lot drainage plan at the time of permit application so as not to direct any additional drainage onto surrounding properties, specifically roof drains. There are no compatibility issues regarding scenic or heritage resources. I impacts on city finances and budgets. Staff comment, not applicable. J other matters as specified in this bylaw. Staff comment, there are none. And K other matters as considered relevant. Staff comment, the intent the intent is to create two lots on the proposed R two zoned land. A minor subdivision will be required to create the two lots. Staff review, city staff supports the application from P E I Housing Corporation to amend the city official plan from institutional land use to residential land use and the city zoning bylaw from institutional I zone to low-density mixed residential R two zone. As per section five point one zero, part B three of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. Planning board recommendation, the application received from P E I Housing Corporation for a portion of P I D number six four two nine zero zero to amend the city official plan from institutional land use to residential land use and amend the city zoning bylaw from institutional I zone to low-density mixed residential R two zone, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself myself and seconded by Counselor Rick Morrison. Are there any questions?
Not a, well, maybe, no, not a question, but a comment, and I brought it up the night that it was presented. The only thing I'm curious about is why we're not, or why they are not requesting the whole property. So I know the province is looking for housing lots. When you say there's two in the little darkened shaded-out area, probably see about three more that they could add there as well, and I I see that land on that corner becoming somewhat of an issue, where we have a corner there with lots of traffic in that area, commercial, residential. I'm just wondering if there was any thought on their part to, it's nothing to not approve it, but I would like to see more housing lots, especially from the province when we're in the need for housing. So it just seems like a, and I know we have a minister in attendance tonight, I'm just sort of saying that out loud, but if we could possibly look at that, it would make a lot of sense to have five houses in that area as opposed to two, and then go look in other areas for land to develop.
Okay. Minister Ramsey, you're going to take that back now, do you? Everyone?
Okay. We had discussions with the provincial staff, and they'd asked for sites where they could put properties or develop that were already serviced. So these ones already have services, whether they're looking at something beyond that. We provided them a list of areas where they could quickly put in spots that were already serviced. The services on the street, they may have something else looking at the remaining property, but these services are on this frontage now, whether they're looking at the remaining part of the property or beyond that. That's why this was before, yeah.
Just so I understand what you're saying, so the back of the lot's not serviced?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Or if you went with something bigger there, that like on Patrick Street, the water and service services are there, and the street is there, they don't have to do any services.
Right, thank you.
They have to provide individual ones for the mains, but they don't have to do anything large.
Yeah, exactly.
So they basically picked off the frontage here that they could do.
Thank you.
Okay, so is anything, anything else?
I guess I'll just have a quick note here. Great to see housing and housing here, and as Counselor Snow pointed out, we have Minister of the Provincial Government here in the gallery, and it's great to see the province finding pockets wherever they can to put housing of a variety of types. And this is not, again, this is one of these situations, it's not a traditional process, but it's being innovative and flexible and finding units for people who need them, and certainly needed here in our community.
Okay, I'll just read the recommendation one more time. The application received from P E I Housing Corporation for a portion of P I D number six four two nine zero zero to amend the city official plan from institutional land use to residential land use and amend the city zoning bylaw from institutional institutional I zone to low-density mixed residential R two zone, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Rick Morrison. All members of the planning board in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none, so that is carried. Final recommendation of the evening, mobile sales establishment application for two seventy-two All Weather Highway. Supporting explanation, the purpose of the application is to allow a mobile sales establishment, Frosty Freaks Ice Cream Treats, to operate at two seventy-two All Weather Highway. That was fun to say. Background, Gary Ramsey has applied for a mobile sales establishment license at two seventy-two All Weather Highway, weather permitting. Mr. Ramsey's proposed hours of operation are eleven A M. to nine P M. Monday through Sunday. And there's a, just a top-down view of the location, so it's at Compton's Farm Market. Mobile sales establishment means a business located in a motorized vehicle or movable structure that is towed or moved by a motorized vehicle and where all of the goods, wares, or foodstuffs that are offered for sale are contained entirely within the motorized vehicle or movable structure, but does not include a lunch truck. Report, under the section three, City of Summerside Licensing Bylaw, C S twenty-one, the bylaw states the following. Section thirteen, Mobile Sales Establishment License. A, any person or company seeking a license to operate a mobile sales establishment in the city shall make application therefore to council. B, licenses may be granted for a mobile sales establishment to conduct business on a maximum of two locations in the city, and each application shall be accompanied by a letter of permission from the owner or owners of the property on which the mobile sales establishment will be located. C, council shall allow or refuse the application based upon considerations of safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. D, council may attach terms and conditions to the approval of the license if granted, including but not limited to hours and days of operation, health code requirements, litter control, or approved locations. E, the license for a mobile sales establishment shall be valid for the calendar year in which the application is made only. A new application is required to council for each calendar year. F, no appeal shall lie from a decision of council respecting a mobile sales establishment license. Staff comments, the property at two seventy-two All Weather Highway is zoned agricultural with a restricted use approval to operate a retail store, Compton's Farm Market. Council has approved mobile sales establishments in both commercial and residential zones to date. The license fee is five hundred dollars for local and a thousand dollars for a non-local applicant. Recommendation, city staff support the application received from Gary Ramsey to operate a mobile sales establishment, Frosty Freaks Ice Cream Treats, at two seventy-two All Weather Highway, property owned by Highcroft Farms, Inc. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. So before I read the recommendation, are there any questions? So I don't have to read it twice. Hearing, none. The mobile sales establishment application from Gary Ramsey to allow a mobile sales establishment, Frosty Freaks Ice Cream Treats, to operate at two seventy-two All Weather Highway, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. All members of the planning board in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? None, so that is carried. And I will hand things back over to your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Duran, and I'm going to hand them immediately over to Director Aaron and Linda to provide an update on East West Connector.
Okay, I provided a quick little recap of the East West Connector and your package. Again, back in two thousand and eight, we went through a process, and the city adopted the East West Connector Street Plan. In that plan, it identified some policies and goals for this region restricted area of land. One of the things that was to come out of that plan was to consider and create a separate zone for the land that directly abuts the connector road for a distance of about two hundred feet or sixty meters on each side of it, and that zone would be specific to this area only and and consider a number of a number of different criteria. Staff brought that back to council and committee in two thousand and nine, and the process kind of stalled at that time for numerous reasons. Now, this year, that we're back with the the design and a budget to proceed with a portion of this build, it's time to get the zoning portion in compliance and ready to go parallel with that timeline. The update on the design is that it's still proceeding with the design team. We're reviewing probably every month or so how they're doing on on various, we're designing the entire project, and then going to split it based on landowner's availability or desire as well as functionality, what can be done based on the water and sewer in the final design, and we'll bring yous up to date as that progresses further. So we're here today just to try to talk about the zoning a little bit and also the process that was outlined in oh eight and oh nine. We do not have to stick with that. We just have to make yous aware that we're to create a process, and we want to give yous an update and, I guess, start a process to kick off a connector zone, which would be call a public meeting, have a staff outline the items, then go to planning board, then go to council. But prior to going to that first meeting, we thought we should come to you guys first and say, this is what we're proposing to tell people would be considered, and more or less a quick, a quick refresher. And so if I refer to the quick little document there, again, we are looking at council as the requirements, they would approve a connector zone development proposal or application, and they must meet some minimum requirements. Again, they are to meet the intent of the policies that are outlined in this East West Connector Plan. At the same parallel process, we can review and do some minor housekeeping to that East West Connector Plan to make it current to what our thoughts are, the desires are now fifteen years later. They have to comply with the development of the, so that's consistent with our overall official plan policies, and council will approve a development plan that's in place for the area. So what's different is what's, what was proposed is that we would not make this. So what's different is what's, what was proposed is that we would not make this, um, I might know if I have a little sketch there, I know the, it might be a separate document there, yeah. So we're not rezoning the entire landmass, we're just taking the strip of the highway and doing, I'll call a buffer, a strip of two hundred feet on each side of it. So again, the target was to try and get uh, uh, a lot of property, high density, um, complete streets, although I'm gonna say those catchwords, but that at the time, that was with the vision in oh eight, oh nine. So again, the intent was to allow council to have some control over what actually gets developed there by actually making them come in and do a development proposal as opposed to straight rezoning it R-four and saying, come in and build everything. Because we've seen properties in the city that have been zoned R-four and based on landowners uh, desire or current market, they develop it as R-two or R-three and you don't get your maximum density that you're envisioning for this strip of land, so. Um, we'll get into that a little bit further, but that's kind of the rationale that was talked about in oh eight, oh nine of why you're asking for. You're also uh, allowing individual developers to come in and make a proposal that may not match exactly what be in an R-four. You know, they may get more density, they may get more height, which we'll go through those. So that it's kind of a trade-off to say, to put this street through this area and be a hundred foot wide and be a, I mean, Q and Road is what I reference. It's like a eleven meter wide street, you know, that's the type of street that we're talking here. To put that street through, you're gonna target wider, wider streets, uh, parking on both sides, a active transportation path on one side and a sidewalk on another. So again, if someone was to come in to do and pick a parcel of land, they would come in with a concept and they would uh, start a negotiation process by bringing forth an application with a proposed development that are in accordance with these pre-conditions that are approved by council, so that's why we wanna make sure these are what your vision is. The applicant would submit a uh, comprehensive development plan for a council to consider. Council would approve it based on a review in the entire site. Uh, they can look at the en- entire area and they can be more specific and if they wanna just phase it. And again, uh, that would be council's uh, it's kind of a balance of, it's not as of right zoning, but council has to have some say that they wanna get the density and depth that they want. After they agree and sign that proposal, it's then handed over to staff and if the developer comes through a part of their process, if they end up making, I'll say, minor revisions, building sightings, setbacks, we're not bringing back those details for approval and go through another process as long as they're meeting the general intent to allow the development to happen. So that our, the idea would be that, yes, we got the density, we got the type of development we wanted. Leave the details and the minor details to staff and if they have to retweak stuff, that's okay, we'll not, we'll, as long as the general intent is being met. Um, again, we were to consider a number of what were deemed, I'll say, uh, I, I categorized them here as, as development bonuses. So I was kind of saying, okay, well, this street is gonna be going up through all these properties, um, in oh eight, I keep referring back to oh eight in that document. Um, there were some things or development bonuses that were gonna be considered, so I wanna just quickly recap those with yous to say that that was seen as a perk or a bonus to the developer for uh, considering. So again, right now, let's take an entire field that's being developed, the entire total area is used to calculate parkland, parkland dedication. We're proposing as one of the uh, benefits in this zone was to eliminate the hundred-foot road out of that calculation. It's not a me, you know, some way, it's by itself, each thing are small, small things, but they're all considered uh, s- small perks or bonuses. Consider right now, we allow so much total floor area for the size of a lot. We adjusted it in our last official plan and zoning, was it nineteen? In twenty nineteen, I think it went from point six or sixty percent of the lot to eighty percent of the lot. In this instance, on an individual case-by-case basis, if someone comes with a proposal, open to consider more density in that. Won't you see it on an actual plan and see how it all looks? Um, as we've done in the downtown, we've reduced the required number of parking spaces based on having the availability of being downtown and walkable. The intent was that if we have sidewalk and active transit on this route and part of this road, also if the city evolves and the community evolves into having uh, public transit, this would be a road that would be a main street. You'd expect the transit to be on it, so you could allow, we're not saying we'll require that, we're just, we'll require less if the developer wants to include more, they can. Right now, we allow, we require one space in a residential, say apartments. We find developers are putting in one point two five to one point five based on more than one car per, per apartment or room for visitors. But we're saying, we're putting the onus on the developer, not a requirement of the city. So we'd be open to considering less there. Again, we only allow a certain size total foot of a building on a lot, we'd be open to considering a larger footprint again, again for review at that time. Again, buildings are supposed to be set at six meters or twenty feet from the boundary line at the front. Again, if we looked at an overall concept, we'd be willing to say, that's not a hard and fast rule, come in with a concept, showing how you can fit more on the lot. We'd be open to that. Again, as kind of mentioned, it's kind of ironic, the uh, the application before us that we had here was floors of residential, commercial on the bottom. Um, if this is gonna service and be a type that would service that community and the region, a lot of properties close by, we'd be open to allowing a consideration of commercial on the entire ground floor, if someone walks in on a proposal. We'd be again, open to uh, recommending projects that uh, currently exceed our fourteen meter or forty-six foot height restriction. Again, what we run into opposition to that is, oh, it's close to existing properties, it's, now if we're going in first in open field land, are you guys open to considering higher than four stories along this strip for the two hundred foot? And the last one was, depending on if it was phased, if there was room enough to be other streets off of it. Some things that we've run into is like when they have to provide a stub street to the abutting property and then to have a turnaround there. Uh, it was proposed if the city would consider covering the cost of constructing that turnaround because it would allow us access to the abutting property, so. Again, we can, those were the things we're talking about in oh eight, oh nine, those are the things that we'll, we're suggesting go forward for consideration now. They're open to uh, you guys bringing forward more ideas, more bonuses, or taking away some things that you're not comfortable with because now's the time that we would bring forward those, those uh, ideas and say, that's what we're proposing would be in this zone and we would be calling the first public meeting for it. Again, um, we are open at that time to also say, listen, come in with this tract of land that you're looking at and uh, as part of this bonus, be creative and allow something that you may think doesn't meet our current standards. Whether it be a street with less frontage or um, allowing, you know, we're open to saying, look, don't be a standard development. Come in with a creative idea and you'd be willing to consider what they're proposing if they're slightly different than our standards. So that's kind of the, the recap of the update. Tonight would be the first to tell you, is that okay, we're the ones that would be initiating a rezoning typically as an applicant coming forward. Um, since we're the ones doing it, we thought we should be identifying to you, you as a group, uh, here's what's gonna be in the document, even though you may not have had a chance to read all the details. Um, we would call then to, for a public meeting. Uh, again, it'll go through those three steps, a public meeting where we would stand for somebody from the city and say, this is the zone the city's proposing. Um, we would uh, then go to planning board and then to council. Typically, when it's a citywide, when you change something in the zoning by that applies to the entire city, individual notifications don't go out to, because you'd have, I don't know how many residents we got, six thousand dwellings, we'd be sending out all those letters. In this case where this zone is only directly gonna be abutting specified landowners, uh, we may try and identify and treat that like a typical zoning and say, this is the depth we have and anybody that's within our typical notification distance off of these. Right now, ironically, it goes through about five or six actual properties, but if we pick the road or the buffer zone and said, anybody that's within thirty meters beyond that, provide them an additional letter of notification like we typically would, is more than what we would do for a normal uh, rezoning and or creating a bylaw change because it applies citywide, so. I'm open to any questions, that's the quick recap of the two pages I'd sent yous. If uh, if I missed anything or, or glazed over something, please ask and that's a quick recap of the steps going forward.
Uh, Aaron, uh, thanks. So, just so we're clear, if, because we, it, this is prime, prime time. Uh, we're in need of housing, there's gonna be housing opportunities uh, surfaced here, I know. And uh, how long is this process gonna take? For, and first of all, where, are we doing this in three phases, two phases, one phase? And where would the start point be? Uh, would it be on Ryan Street?
So what we have-
Just so people know.
Okay. Right now, we had projected uh, from Water Street up to the uh, arch there where it would be the long connector. Right now, that goes over to the trailer park, um, Woodbridge Trailer Park. That's a kilometer down to Water Street. From that same intersection over to Ryan Street ironically is a kilometer as well.
Perfect.
So we were saying the first phase would, first phase would be either kilometer,
Okay.
but include the link over to the trailer park as well to give them that second access out.
I agree.
That's what we're asking, we're still telling the designers to design the whole thing and then we're gonna split it for a tender package.
Okay.
So a- again, our target was to push the designer to get the design ready for a package. Then we're gonna have to make the decision self, ourselves to say which half we're gonna put out and also the timing. Like right now, as far as the availability of contractors and what we think the entire schedule would be, is it a tender later this summer that we extend? We know they can't do this in one season.
Right.
So do we allow the end date to be wide open and the flexibility of contractors availability to say, can I start this fall? Or can I buy my materials to lock in my prices and start next spring? We're gonna have those negotiations and discussions with our designer.
And I guess my point being that there's opportunities coming up all the time with housing. I just came from the FCM uh, conference with everybody else and uh, there's, there's gonna be a big push for housing. We, we're way behind and uh, this is a prime area. I'm just wondering if the conversation has been taken place with the property owners and how fast can we get things?
I, I guess I did have a, we had had, I had interest from one property owner when, the day it was announced in the budget and I said, give us a little bit, we're still during the budget, budget meeting and uh, so I have sat down with a couple of landowners and uh, as recently as this week and last week, I'm gonna try to reach out to the other ones to say, this is to give them the same update to say, here's where the design is going, there's been various talk, they had inquiries about different things. We said we may as well talk about the East-West while you're here. And uh, so, and again, the which half, it may get, it get down to which half makes sense because we get to the top half out to Ryan Street, unfortunately, the sanitary sewer, they're not finished doing the design, but the preliminary looks are, it can't get out to McQ and Road, that entire property with a lift station. So it may make sense to do the other side because a lift station's gonna be a large expense, that's uh, gonna be an individual property owners to deal with and so anyhow, we're still working through those, those challenges that when they come out through the development, we had the, the route done. Uh, we finalized where it's gonna come out in Water Street with that landowner and now we're working on the water and sewer and we met with another landowner, so. I'm not sure if I answered all your questions, but yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Thanks a lot, Aaron.
I just wanted to say thank you for this because um, a lot of people have been asking, um, and I'm sure you've been getting a lot of calls upstairs as well. And I do appreciate um, taking that, no matter which one you're going to do first, that Woodbridge is being taken into consideration because that's a, um, that's something that we, we really wanna to get taken care of. The residents in the area are quite vocal about the, their concerns over if there was an emergency and I think um, our past, um, when we experienced Fiona, I think that sort of stepped it up a little, that they realized how, how bad it could be if there was an emergency, so. Um, thank you for doing that and yeah, looking forward to the public meetings.
The, the other thing with that section being it, as well as the existing, uh, I'll say, uh, Woodbridge, uh, I think it was a year ago or a little over, more a year ago, the next property was brought forth for a preliminary approval of rezoning. So it's another reason why that section should be included to allow that development again to have, expand that density up there and still have a second way out. And if they're gonna be doing a road as part of theirs, we wanna make sure that they put the section going across the top to meet this new design rather than, so we wouldn't wanna have, if we can do that at the same time, it just makes more, more sense, I guess.
Um, just a question, Aaron, and it, it looks great, they, um, you say if it's do, done in two halves, I assume that's two consecutive seasons, it would be, like my fear would be that you, you do the Water Street end, which would be great and then nothing happened for three or four years and people start to develop up there, then you'd still have the growing issue of
Yep.
continually dumping more traffic onto Water Street and, because it would be the only way in and only way out.
Yep.
And that could cause some-
So I guess I should clarify that the reason it's being done based on phasing is based on our own budgeting.
Right.
And so that if it could be all done in one, if we had enough money, or if we can be lucky enough to get uh, funding programs that come out, it may facilitate it happening faster. The other part I should add on is that, I didn't get it, is that every developer, if, if we weren't to build an East-West Connector, what, if they went to develop these farms, we'd say, you're still building your own local street and that location, you're still gonna connect. So each individual landowner's been told, if that current number is three thousand dollars a meter, if this one comes in at five thousand, you're paying your three thousand and we're paying the additional two thousand to get to five thousand. If they're not ready to develop, it's getting attached to their property now via lien, so that they develop within twenty years. The city can recoup that cost from that initial investment. So they don't have to be ready uh, day one, but if it's within the first couple of years, the same, by the time I sell, they're got, they pay interest, I think, for the first five years and up to twenty years, the city would recoup the, the, the main local street cost of three thousand dollars, we'll say.
Yep. No, I wanna say, I think it's a great idea, I'd just hate for it to be one of those things that got halfway through.
Yeah.
And then it would just create more issues than probably help, but.
So our, that's the intent of having the design completed all the way, so it's done and the rest is gonna be in your control as well as contractor availabilities uh, to do the work on the timeframe.
Yep. Thank you.
Just to follow up, Rick, that's a very valid point, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I'd hate to see it get stalled halfway through. Um, I wonder through Bruce and Kristen, if we shouldn't be looking at, if there's any rapid housing or FCM funding that might allow, because this is gonna open up significant amount of land that can be developed for housing. Is there anything that is currently on the books that we can tie into or apply for?
We currently have met-
Okay, good job.
-staff on chasing a couple of funding programs, yeah. But we're still proceeding based on no funding and if we get the funding, we know it may allow to excel it, we'll be back to yous and say, this is the money we budgeted. When we actually get a tender price, we'll look and say, does that allow us to go farther the first phase or, or allow us to accelerate this timeframe of the second phase based on the funding?
Yeah, and the timing is lining up well with infrastructure dollars from other levels of government. All levels of government recognize the need to increase housing supply. You got a funny mic.
Lights not on, I can hear you, though, go ahead.
Anyway, I don't know if this is an appropriate question by Bill and if I have a responsible staff.
Sure.
Um, and what I'm wondering about is, and thank you for the, the update on the Ca- the East-West Connector. My question is, we're talking about potential development uh, for housing, rapid housing and especially in particular, the area around development bonuses. What I'm wondering is, could the city potentially be put in a position for an expectation on ditch and filling requests? And the reason why I'm asking it now is because of all of the talk around housing, that might not be appropriate. But if we are faced with it, do we have a plan in place for that or would we have?
This system, our street that would go in would be a uh, storm, water, and sanitary system curbed with no ditches. That's what this program, this would go in is, so I don't know the-
So nothing?
There's no, there's no uh, new subdivisions that go in in Summerside to date with a ditch system. So even us doing this one, we're, we're still gonna do it to, uh, sorry, Linda's gotta pop up there. That's what, what would look on your screen, if you, I don't know if your screen's working, but there's no, there's no ditches in that system. It would be just like McQ and Road as far as the entire width and there's a pipe storm system in place instead of a ditch.
Okay.
So.
So we, as a city, we would not run into any situation where people may feel that something was created for them unfairly and the city would be put in that position where we would have to address that?
I think you're, uh, the, I'm gonna say what, some might deem the unfairness to be citywide. You're targeting this uh, development strip to, it's- You're targeting this development strip to, it, we are not calling it rapid housing. We know there's a need for rapid housing. But you can be seen as saying, these are the incentives we're doing to increase uptake in this major area that you're putting a major capital dollar in to try and recoup some of your dollars. And this is the area that you want to try and get the higher density because it's going to be on a wider street than a typical residential street. So you're kind of justified in all your reasons why you're doing specific enhancements in the specific zone. And this only applies to 200 feet at each side of this road at this time. So I don't, and whether you choose later on to do that, later on when some buildings get built and they're higher than 46 feet, you're saying that doesn't really look too at a, at a place. You may decide to go that further based on, you know, we have seven stories downtown and I don't know if anybody's saying, should that be five or eight, you know? Like again, once it's over three stories, I ain't looking over the top of it, you know, like is, but again, it's the comfort of how close you are to it. And if you're in there and saying, really, that's not that bad, you're also allowing these people to come in with a mix of stuff in their concept, saying it's not going to be all just five-story buildings. It could be a cluster of this and something else and come in with a concept saying, this is what I want to do in this pocket of land. I want to have some different types, but lots of density. To still meet your criteria or desire to have, meet the housing needs.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Director Aaron. But I just want to clarify, I'm not targeting the area. I just have a question. And I felt that it needed to be asked upfront so that I would be comfortable with, you know, how the proceedings will go. Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Aaron, Linda and your whole team. I guess effectively what we're doing here is creating the opportunity for a new neighborhood in the city, which is, we're undertaking a new approach. In the context of the need to increase housing supply. And I really appreciate all the work that your team's been doing to get us here. I'm looking forward to the plan. So as I understand the next steps, the 2008 plan will be updated for 2023. And then we will have a chance to review that, correct?
We will call a, the first thing I guess you had to say what some changes will be. And put forward public meeting to advertise that and make us all aware of it. And to say, debate them and say, this is what's being proposed. Maybe there's pros and cons to it. Maybe we have to modify it again. And then bring those things to a planning board to start making it an act or law.
Okay. And then when you say a public meeting, would you envision that that be at the credit union place type thing or would it be in here? Because the one thing I'd really want to make sure we do is one, we have a housing task force who's looking at zoning and increasing density and figuring this stuff out. To make sure that they have the opportunity to comment on the plan and that we also get, make sure that the people who are going to build housing here have an opportunity to provide their comments. To get that stakeholder feedback as well as, as the overall community, because we want to make sure we get this, do this right so that, that we get the housing built.
Typically, we've held our, our meetings here unless we got notified of a excessive crowd. We've, I don't know if I've had to have a planning board meeting or a special council meeting for a topic elsewhere, but we certainly could. If we get advised of volume, we've set up auxiliary rooms here to allow people to hear and view and then still come forward and make the. So it, we're open to it, but we haven't had to use it. But if that's, if that's what deemed the need, once we hear back from people saying 50 different people or 70 different people, we've accommodated more than that here prior, but we'll see.
And then maybe if we can, because this isn't one specific section, right, we're going to give notice to individuals. Maybe we can make sure to get the plan out into the, like I said, the housing task force and the people in the community who look at this type of things. We can get their feedback before we get to council, so we're informed by them as well. I'm, I'm sure you guys talk to them, but it's helpful for us to have their input. And I think I'm really looking forward to the discussions of, I think at that point too, Aaron, that's where we would have the conversations about if there was a possibility of providing more deference to staff to make some of these decisions through here to eliminate some of the political decision-making. So that we do hear that quite a bit. Developers want certainty with respect to how they're moving forward. And I think it is really, you know, the one thing that, that I kind of geek out on this stuff that I think is really interesting, this sort of as-of-right thing. We're almost, we're flipping it backwards. It's always been as-of-right so that people could build more density. And now, you know, we want to make sure that, that we get that density because there's certainly other places where we've had as-of-right, our four zoning and then ended up with our two units with lower density that isn't the objective here. So I know it's a new approach and I really appreciate all the work you guys are doing.
It's a new approach, but you're also making a major city investment in this area as well to justify the need for the additional density.
And just for context, I think it's about 125 acres, this whole section that we see on the map for potential development, is that correct?
I think that might have been just what was a butting, a butting, the entire undeveloped area all the way around was like 300. But I think it was 120 for what was just close to a butting this land, but I can get you a number.
Potential for hundreds and hundreds of, of units.
Yes, yeah.
Amazing.
Now, again, one of the criteria we had in there that we'll have to review was, there is some concepts in there to allow people to, or I think it was probably two planners ago. Or that had done some review when this started. And there was some concepts in there to allow people to think beyond the standard and say, that's not what we're proposing, but be open to that. At the same time, it was thought before any route was picked, that we're going to try and limit access and change the cost sharing. Now that a route got picked and we're only going to be in one, I'll say farm-wide, it's not wide enough to have a second. So we had to meet with the landowners and say, yes, you are going to have access directly to this road, which is contrary to what's stated in there. But we're going to have less accesses because we're going to require higher density. So if you end up putting all semis in, you got a lot of driveways. If that same property goes in with two apartment buildings, you can get down to two driveways. So you'll be accommodating your limiting access, but, but not actually having, so we are going to have to change a few things. There are some, I'll say, housekeeping in the official, in the east-west connector plan itself, as well as coming up with the connector zones. That when they bring forth their proposals through their concept, they're going to say, we tried targeting everything you guys had laid out in your east-west plan.
Great, that's fabulous. Thank you very much. Counselor Ron?
Thank you, Yourship. Just, just one final thing and just something that we sometimes forget to mention when we're talking about this is, we're going to have to sort of visualize it as we go. Is just how this is going to affect the Rotary Park. Obviously, the concept goes right smack dab through it. So the more we talk about this and not mention that, I think the more.
We have individually, I guess, that we can bring for it. My own personal thought is, we had talked of potentially of saying, trying to create, again, I'm not going to speak for the recreation or people that operate that facility. But we need some areas potentially to expand our park or the visibility. We're saying, we're going to be coming up here with active transportation and walking, but also people are coming in with cars. Potentially on the strip that's just north of it that we understand the city owns. We can do two things with a portion of that. We can do a, divide up a building, come up with our own concept and put it out for, making sure this is what we want for density. And potentially take a corner of a piece of that and say, that's a park and ride. Or we can pull off and park and say, get off of this street, park here and go for a walk and access the. So we have control of our own little strip of land that we have, we can say, we want to come up with our own development concept.
Yeah.
To complement the park going forward and where we are cutting across it. We are proposing as well to say, perhaps we make a, obviously, if the trail goes all the way still down to. We will put a crosswalk, a building, a crosswalk at that location, as well as a crosswalk down at the Confederation Trail location and put in some rapid beacons like we have in a couple of locations there. And that's where our thoughts are as far as access in the park and accommodating some of the other, that's just our thoughts to come forward.
Yeah, so the messaging has to be, we're, this is to be incorporated into the park and sort of enhance the park and that we have no desire to remove the park for development.
Correct, yeah. Now, like I say, there's a, there's a strip that we'll get into exactly where it crosses and we can identify, there's the depth. And do we want to be a leader and pick a spot and say, there's a concept we want to do and what size of building? And find it, put it out for proposal, get somebody to build it and include it in parking lot beside it. That's up for discussion as well.
Great, thank you much, very much, Aaron and Linda. Any other questions for counsel? Nope. Okay. Great. I'm looking forward to the plan and the timeline for that is, reporting back to counsel and.
We're just going to go back now and, and come back and try to formalize what we would have ready, those bullets to say, and what the actual. I'll sit down with staff and say, what would we do for a typical rezoning or what has to be done for a, creating a new zone so we have that verbiage ready.
Great.
It's a priority for us because we want to try and coincide with meeting with the landowners and saying, this project going ahead, but what am I going to be allowed to develop in that? And yeah.
Yeah, fabulous. Yeah. Great, thank you very much. So we will adjourn the planning board meeting. We'll take just maybe two minutes there before we start the committee of the whole, just if anyone needs to grab anything. Thanks very much, everyone.
Yeah, I found that really interesting.
I'm gonna get pictures of the sun, huh?
Want me to take it?
Sure.
Getting up there with it.
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
starting here at, what are we now, six thirty-eight or something like that, six thirty-eight P. M. Begin with approval of the agenda, so I had asked councillor Cameron to move the approval of the agenda. So move second councillor Ron. All in favor?
Move.
Sure, yeah, I was going to move item six up to item four, if that's okay with everybody. Just so we can get Greg home earlier. Everyone in favor with the agenda as presented, anyone oppose? No, I was pretty quick, sorry Bruce, you barely got your arm up. We'll move forward with the agenda as presented, any conflict of interest, declaration on any of the items here this evening? Hearing none, so we're gonna move number six up, that will be the electrical pole upgrades as deputy mayor Snow. Over to you.
Thank you, your worship. So basically, it started in the last meeting we were at, I had a question for councillor Glant. And basically, I just thought it'd be good to get some follow-up on it, maybe a better understanding, I guess, for myself right now through my ward. There's some significant upgrades to our poles, which is great to see. New poles being put in, and I understand it has to do with the solar farm upgrades, et cetera. But the more and more I noticed it, even prior to the new poles being put in specifically down on North Market Street in that area, I was fielding some questions regarding poles being put in and maybe being left with large amounts of soil around them, not looking like they're finished, maybe. I know from talking to residents who have inquired with staff, they've been told, and the explanation makes a lot of sense, that the soil's left there to the existing pole or the old pole is removed, and then that soil goes in. Which makes sense when I hear the explanation, but then I go to areas where there is poles that there's not a secondary pole or there's, it's been removed for quite some time and the soil's still there to the point where grass and stuff is growing up. And it just, overall, public vision of our city, how it looks and property owners, that sort of stuff, I think there's a responsibility maybe to us as a utility to make sure that it's cleaned up after we put in the pole. So I just sort of wanted to know how that works, an explanation of where we're at, how long that project's gonna take, are there, is it gonna be cleaned up, how long? I know there's some issues with the, like Bell Line and East Link and the people that use the other pole and getting them to do some work, but I think there's an obligation maybe on their part that we need to push the middle line, but I'll just, yeah, I'll push it over to you.
I can take. Take you through some of the salient issues on that topic, so just very quickly, why are poles done? So we have aging assets, so we do, we try to do about a hundred pole replacements a year, and that takes about fifteen years to catch up to our current inventory. The other reason is for upgrading circuits for higher voltage requires higher poles and safety issues for construction for space between the items that are on the pole that are high voltage for the working power line technicians. And the final one is new circuits in the area that cause it. So the other side is the joint use poles. So the joint use poles that councillor Snow had mentioned is about the other people that use those poles, which is Bell, East Link, sometimes the province has communication wires on them as well as ourselves, as the Summerside Smart Grid has those on them as well. So all those parties, we have a joint working committee between those utilities to talk about pole attachments and transfers and liquidations. So they meet basically monthly on that. The agreement for that governs that work is, was done in twenty fourteen, ten-year agreement, and it ends in twenty twenty-four, so that's when it's open for renegotiation. During those negotiations, the city tried to get a six-month period before penalty start, but they wouldn't, couldn't get to an agreement, so we settled on the year, a year timeframe for the first agreement, but it's coming up for renegotiation. So just to give you an idea on the pole, what you see is the very top is the utility Summerside Electric Space, and then there's a space in between, that's the, basically, we call a neutral space for use, for separation, to make sure the communication people can do safe work on the pole when they're up there. Then we have a small communication space, and then all that is dictated by a height above ground for vehicles and safety to public. So once we go through that, just to give you an idea, the new pole is usually put close to another pole. And here, you can see in the bottom, there's a mound of dirt at the bottom of the pole, that's usually how it starts out, how it starts. And from past discussions with staff, they've left the dirt there for two reasons. As councillor Snow had said, is to help fill in the other pole, but also help with some settlement around the pole. The thing we're refining is to get rid of most of the dirt, with the exception of a few inches for settlement around the pole, but to make it a much more tidlier construction zone when we're done. And if we do need more dirt when the old pole comes out, that's a separate situation rather than leaving it right there. So that's our go-forward plan, so hopefully to address some of these concerns in the community. So basically, the steps though is the first, the pole goes in, and then we transfer the power equipment to the new pole, and then we hand off, then we basically cut it down. So you'll see sometimes a higher pole next to a very stub pole that just has communication wires on it, that's a step in between of the finished work. So then we notify the communication companies, they need work to do on that pole, that we're done and ready, and they have up to one year under the agreement to get that work done. When that year surpasses, they get a penalty of one hundred dollars per month per pole when it's not done. So that's a penalty that's imposed upon those companies for being tardiness in their work. That's what's in the agreement now. We try to get it to be more timely because we believe a year's too long to try to remove a pole, but that yes, has yet to be negotiated with those companies. We do manage it by the pole attachment, so we log and track every request to them and put a date stamp on it, and every month it's updated with the companies to give a status request as to where they're at, what their work plan is, to get, so we know where they're at with their pole work. And that's when we also give them bills on the penalties, so it kind of gives them a, to understand that they hire priority poles. Some of the concerns on their end is budgetary requirements, trying to budget for costs, but we find that's a poor argument for the look and, look and aesthetics of roadways are important to communities, so we try to do that and manage that. So then they'll communicate the transfer equipment, they'll tell us when they're done, and then we go and remove the pole. So when you're, when you're out looking on the streetscapes, you'll see a progressed step of the pole, which is, step one is the high pole, step two is when it's cut down, then step three is when it's removed and remediated with the hole. So just a very quick step figure, and then, so the past practice has been to leave dirt behind, but we've instructed staff and operations not to do that any longer. So going forward, it won't be one, and then we'll try to get a work task on to clean up those that are out there. Currently, we have about a hundred and sixty poles that are out there that are yet to be transferred, so there's a lot of double poles in the community that need to be actioned. So in our operations group, we try to do an action work item every month and try to get a six to ten poles done per day once we get a certain amount, as long as we have six to ten, we'll assign it work for that day. If we have twenty, we'll do two days of work in that month. But what we're trying to do is not leave a ready-to-be-removed pole longer in the ground than two months is our work schedule right now with all the other demands on the, on the department. As far as the new Sun Bank project, on the final point, that's a ready-to-remove pole in the picture, so there's really, this case, there's not much dirt and that around it, but that's ready to be removed. So if there's any person that contacts council, you can ask them to give us a call and identify that this pole that they see is ready if we haven't been notified, and we'll get to it as soon as we can, as our work schedule permits. The Sun Bank project has a total of ninety-six poles in the community and through parts of the community that are double-pole'd. That's probably a special project, we don't usually see that many all at once, but that's to be completed by the end of September, which is unfortunate, it's through the lawn growing season, but it's a kind of a rule of thumb that the work just won't be ready for the poles removed until the end of September, I don't think, at this rate. So that's kind of where we're at for council information, and staff willing to send this along, and you can educate constituents and residents of City Summerside for, for what they need to know. And if there's any questions along the way, there, feel free to call our direct line to main desk, and we create an action item and get back to them in a timely manner.
So Greg, just to basically sum it up, that was basically an old practice that hopefully moving forward, we won't see poles with.
Correct.
And in the meantime, we're gonna try to get back and rectify some of those issues of the soil around the poles.
Yeah.
And yeah, it would be great if we could get that time down to a more reasonable, I think, a year's long as well, but. Okay, no, thank you, I appreciate that, that brings some clarity, yeah.
The last point, the last point I'll say is it's not, it's not, this is what we do, we're willing to revise and change as you need.
Yeah.
If there's any specific, special cases that happen. Some of the old practice too, we're kind of to cut the pole off below grade and just cover it over, leave the wood in there, and sometimes you get some settlement and you get the wood popping back up, and so there's all kinds of situations there, there that we need to look after. So if anybody, remind the public, if anybody has any questions or concerns on the poles, just reach out and have a conversation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Greg, just, thanks for that. The, we must do all right on the fines for after, because I, I, there's a lot that are not, that are not done. I know there's one on Tupper Drive that I've been dealing with for a long time, and surprise me and tell me it's gone? I believe it's still there.
I'm not sure, I can't remember if Tupper Drive is exactly in our territory.
Where you're on. Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's on our territory.
We went through that process.
So yeah, so that would be one of the penalties that are being levied as a bills, probably, if it's been past a year. So there's a, there's a, there's a few nuances that have happened is, it's about workflow communications, so the companies on their end that we notify have to be notified formally, not verbally, right? So we've tightened that up in the last six months because of these concerns, they were, they were being told verbally, people thought that that's all they needed to do, but the companies would then be a little difficult to deal with and say, well, you didn't give us the form and sign a date on it. So we've tightened that up a lot, so we're, we're, we're actioning them very vehemently now in these monthly meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I know there's a number of other ones around, but I'll, I'll follow up with you later.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sometimes the last thing to be done by construction companies is the cleanliness of the job.
And it's, it's not so much the pile of dirt that's left there, it's the pole itself that's been cut off, and the attachments are still there, and they haven't been.
Transferred over.
Transferred over, so the pole is not ready to come out, right? So and I, I still see a number of those around, so, thanks.
We'll, we'll take a note to take a scan around the area and make sure.
So Greg, just a question, so has the city collected on some of those poles that actually happens?
Uh, penalties?
Yeah, they're there.
Yeah, the invoices were sent, and they've, I don't know if we've actually collected, but we've definitely gotten action from the companies once we send the bill. It seems like, it seems like they're really pushing it right to the edge.
Yeah.
We send them a penalty and then next month they're gone.
Okay, so that must be a two-way street then, would the city ever be in a position where it has to pay a hundred dollars a month for s-
Yes, so, so if we, so the issue with us is we, we know where our assets are, we seem to do a better job in transferring our own assets, because we're always the first ones off the pole.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, usually.
I was just curious.
It's very rare that, there has been some mix-up sometimes too where the communication companies, the areas where we have communication wire in the space, some have been missed to say, but we're all done. And we said, well, there's still a communication wire, they said, well, don't you know that's your own? So there has been that situation.
Yeah, well, I could, there's a lot of poles out there.
There, there is that, we're not perfect, but we try our best and we try to get sure we action them quickly. The, the biggest thing for me is, I run down the list usually every couple of months and see where the aging of the assets are, and then I usually push staff to action the other companies to say, get it done. Because I understand residents have to whip or snip around them, you know, it's all that extra work and it's, it's not fun.
Yeah.
Not fun.
Thank you.
And ju- just in closing, I, I, I'm almost leaning to the point, and I have some belief that we need to start really considering removing the poles and burying lines, and I, I think there's some value in that, especially, especially in specific areas in the city, view planes, et cetera. So when you're going around and you see two poles, it, it really drives me crazy, so I just, yeah, I just, it's sort of going the opposite way, so. I just, but I, I thank you for your explanation.
Yeah. So one, one of the things the city could look at in their official planning is making covenants and requirements for underground servicing, right? That's usually, the municipality usually has control of the right of way, so to action that. Because when we, because as a utility, to go to that point, we as a utility go and a developer comes and says, well, I'd really like to improve my landscape of my building, I'd like to see it bury the lines. And as a utility, we're saying, well, there's no requirement for us to do that, so it's. The thing we're refining is to get rid of most of the dirt, with the exception of a few inches for settlement around the pole, but to make it a much more tidlier construction zone when we're done. And if we do need more dirt when the old pole comes out, that's a separate situation rather than leaving it right there. So that's our go-forward plan, so hopefully to address some of these concerns in the community. So basically, the steps though is the first, the pole goes in, and then we transfer the, the power equipment to the new pole, and then we hand off, then we basically cut it down. So you'll see sometimes a higher pole next to a very stub pole that just has communication wires on it, that's a, a step in between of the finished work. So then we notify the communication companies, they need work to do on that pole, that we're done and ready, and they have up to one year under the agreement to get that work done. When that year surpasses, they get a penalty of one hundred dollars per month per pole when it's not done. So that's a penalty that's imposed upon those companies for being tardiness in their work. That's what's in the agreement now. We try to get it to be more timely because we believe a year's too long to try to remove a pole, but that yes, has yet to be negotiated with those companies. We do manage it by the pole attachment, so we log and track every request to them and put a date stamp on it, and every month it's updated with the companies to give a status request as to where they're at, what their work plan is, to get, so we know where they're at with their pole work. And that's when we also give them bills on the penalties, so it kind of gives them a, to understand that they hire priority poles. Some of the concerns on their end is budgetary requirements, trying to budget for costs, but we find that's a poor argument for, the look and, look and aesthetics of roadways are important to communities, so we try to do that and manage that. So then they'll communicate the transfer equipment, they'll tell us when they're done, and then we go and remove the pole. So when you're, when you're out looking on the streetscapes, you'll see a progressed step of the pole, which is, step one is the high pole, step two is when it's cut down, then step three is when it's removed and remediated with the hole. So just a very quick step figure, and then, so the past practice has been to leave dirt behind, but we've instructed staff and operations not to do that any longer. So going forward, it won't be one, and then we'll try to get a work task on to clean up those that are out there. Currently, we have about a hundred and sixty poles that are out there that are yet to be transferred, so there's a lot of double poles in the community that need to be actioned. So in our operations group, we try to do an action work item every month and try to get a six to ten poles done per day once we get a certain amount, as long as we have six to ten, we'll assign it work for that day. If we have twenty, we'll do two days of work in that month. But what we're trying to do is not leave a ready-to-be-removed pole longer in the ground than two months is our work schedule right now with all the other demands on the, on the department. As far as the new Sun Bank project, on the final point, that's a ready-to-remove pole in the picture, so there's really, this case, there's not much dirt and that around it, but that's ready to be removed. So if there's any person that contacts council, you can ask them to give us a call and identify that this pole that they see is ready if we haven't been notified, and we'll get to it as soon as we can, as our work schedule permits. The Sun Bank project has a total of ninety-six poles in the community and through parts of the community that are double-pole'd. That's probably a special project, we don't usually see that many all at once, but that's to be completed by the end of September, which is unfortunate, it's through the lawn growing season, but it's a kind of a rule of thumb that the work just won't be ready for the poles removed until the end of September, I don't think, at this rate. So that's kind of where we're at for council information, and staff willing to send this along, and you can educate constituents and residents of City Summerside for, for what they need to know. And if there's any questions along the way, there, feel free to call our direct line to main desk, and we create an action item and get back to them in a timely manner.
So, so Greg, just to basically sum it up, that was basically an old practice that hopefully moving forward, we won't see poles with.
Correct.
And in the meantime, we're gonna try to get back and rectify some of those issues of the soil around the poles.
Yeah.
And yeah, it would be great if we could get that time down to a more reasonable, I think, a year's long as well, but. Okay, no, thank you, I, I appreciate that, that brings some clarity, uh, yeah.
The last, the last point, the last point I'll say is it's not, it's not, this is what we do, we're willing to revise and change as you need.
Yeah.
If there's any specific, special cases that happen. Some of the old practice too, we're kind of to cut the pole off below grade and just cover it over, leave the wood in there, and sometimes you get some settlement and you get the wood popping back up, and so there's all kinds of situations there, there that we need to look after. So if anybody, remind the public, if anybody has any questions or concerns on the poles, just get, to reach out and have a conversation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Greg, just, thanks for that. The, we must do all right on the fines for after, because I, I, there's a lot that are not, that are not done. I know there's one on Tupper Drive that I've been dealing with for a long time, and surprise me and tell me it's gone? I, I believe it's still there.
I'm not sure, I can't remember if Tupper Drive is exactly in our territory. Where you're on.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It's on our territory.
We went through, we went through that process.
So yeah, so that would be one of the penalties that are being levied as a bills, probably, if it's been past a year. So there's a, there's a, there's a few nuances that have happened is, it's about workflow communications, so the companies on their end that we notify have to be notified formally, not verbally, right? So we've tightened that up in the last six months because of these concerns, they were, they were being told verbally, people thought that that's all they needed to do, but the companies would then be a little difficult to deal with and say, well, you didn't give us the form and signed a date on it. So we've tightened that up a lot, so we're, we're, we're actioning them very vehemently now in these monthly meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I know there's a number of other ones around, but I'll, I'll follow up with you later.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Sometimes the last thing to be done by construction companies is the cleanliness of the job.
And it's, it's not so much the pile of dirt that's left there, it's the pole itself that's been cut off, and the attachments are still there, and they haven't been.
Transferred over.
Transferred over, so the pole is not ready to come out, right? So and I, I still see a number of those around, so, thanks.
We'll, we'll take a note to take a scan around the area and make sure.
So Greg, just a question, so has the city collected on some of those poles that actually happens?
Uh, penalties?
Yeah, they're there.
Yeah, the invoices were sent, and they've, I don't know if we've actually collected, but we've definitely gotten action from the companies once we send the bill. It seems like, it seems like they're really pushing it right to the edge.
Yeah.
We send them a penalty and then next month they're gone.
Okay, so that must be a two-way street then, would the city ever be in a position where it has to pay a hundred dollars a month for s-
Yes, so, so if we, so the issue with us is we, we know where our assets are, we seem to do a better job in transferring our own assets, because we're always the first ones off the pole.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, usually.
I was just curious.
It's very rare that, there has been some mix-up sometimes too where the communication companies, the areas where we have communication wire in the space, some have been missed to say, but we're all done. And we said, well, there's still a communication wire, they said, well, don't you know that's your own? So there has been that situation.
Yeah, well, I could, there's a lot of poles out there.
There, there is that, we're not perfect, but we try our best and we try to get sure we action them quickly. The, the biggest thing for me is, I run down the list usually every couple of months and see where the aging of the assets are, and then I usually push staff to action the other companies to say, get it done. Because I understand residents have to whip or snip around them, you know, it's all that extra work and it's, it's not fun.
Yeah.
Not fun.
Thank you.
And ju- just in closing, I, I, I'm almost leaning to the point, and I have some belief that we need to start really considering removing the poles and burying lines, and I, I think there's some value in that, especially, especially in specific areas in the city, view planes, et cetera. So when you're going around and you see two poles, it, it really drives me crazy, so I just, yeah, I just, it's sort of going the opposite way, so. I just, but I, I thank you for your explanation.
Yeah. So one, one of the things the city could look at in their official planning is making covenants and requirements for underground servicing, right? That's usually, the municipality usually has control of the right of way, so to action that. Because when we, because as a utility, to, to go to that point, we as a utility go and a developer comes and says, well, I'd really like to improve my landscape of my building, I'd like to see it bury the lines. And as a utility, we're saying, well, there's no requirement for us to do that, so it's.
Thanks, Greg. Yeah, that's working. Corey, maybe, maybe for the east-west connector, you can put that in. Move on to the next item, I'm just gonna call them now back to item number four. Greg's lights are flashing, but as I understand, Brian's on it. Fiona debris cleanup, councillor Adams.
Thank you, your worship. So I asked for this to be put on the agenda because in the provincial legislature, a week or two ago, Premier King had indicated that his government would work with Charlestown and Summerside for additional Fiona debris cleanup because the province, a little bit, a few days before that, had announced that they were going to help municipalities with their cleanup, some rural municipalities. So I'm just wondering if, as, as a municipality, we have looked into that statement? And if not, can we, and soon? Because I do have, quite a few people have reached out that do have some debris left over. I know it was very time-consuming to try and get everything out at the time after Fiona, so some people are just sort of making a second round out of this spring. Plus, we do have the burn ban and with everything, but the weather looks like it's going to bring us. We want to try and probably get as much of that cleaned up as possible to avoid emergencies and something disastrous happening. So I'm just wondering how we go about calling on, taking them up on their offer that they made.
So there's been no official offer outside of the statement in the legislature? Staff have reached out to local MLAs and the department, they have not responded as of yet in terms of funding. We've had sort of initial conversations internally about when that funding does become available, how we would action it, because we'd likely have to outsource the work at this time of the year because our crews are not available right now with the amount of work that's ongoing from our public works and community services. So the first step is sourcing the funding, staff are, are on top of it, but we don't have an answer today. But at the moment we do, we will put a program together to try and deal with. and deal with, and create a list, and then pick a date, and start going from there.
Yeah. Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
Let's have a question to follow up on that. There are some properties in the city that have still lots of damage from Fiona, but there has not been any cleanup because they're private property owners. When we went through the last week and we had put in place our action plan for the potential fire or something like that, I'm wondering if there's any tools we can employ to get some of those trees just down. I can, I drive around the city, I do see some of the tree areas that aren't our responsibility, and there are trees leaning, which creates quite a fire hazard, so I don't know if there's any, is there any, any options for us to try and encourage those property owners? Most property owners have cleaned up their property, but there certainly are a few that have not.
Not at this time, considering it's private property. Would suggest that there, through this program, there could be some incentives from a financial standpoint to be able to encourage property owners that don't, maybe don't have the wherewithal to deal with those trees, to be able to find some funds to do so. So I, when we follow up with the minister, we'll do the same, and we'll include that in, from a private property perspective.
Can I just add something to your points? Some of the, the residents that I've talked to that are interested in having some of the downed trees removed on their private property, what they're running into is there is a delay. There's not that many contractors or people that are doing it, and if they are, they're so booked, and I think that's where some of the bottleneck is on it.
Yeah, I, just, to follow up on all those, I'd like to mention that, too, but there's a couple of issues that I see almost every day in town, that where the top third of the tree is broken off, and it's leaning, or a big branch is, and it's just hanging on the rest of it. But it's going to be a safety issue in a couple of different ways, because if you have kids or if they're over a sidewalk, or kids playing in the yard, and if they ever come down, I think they're called widow-makers, is the right, and they call them that for a reason. So it would be great if we can get some funding or whatever it is, if the provincial government would do that, and there'd be a list or something, we could, because obviously, there's some people that just can't do anything about it, or they're not, they don't have the means, and there's a few properties around that are actually vacant, you know, that there's still damage from the storm three years ago, let alone Fiona. So it's, it's getting to be, you know, it'd be great if something can be done, and we can get it cleaned up.
If I may just follow on Counselor Rick. I think, too, that the, the city would have a bit more viability, if that's the right word, to attract a contractor or whatever, somebody that would do that instead of a private owner, like if they knew that there was going to be a number of properties that they were going to be able to, to work with, instead of just one-off, kind of thing.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing to consider would be whether or not some of those properties would be in violation of any bylaw requirements we have for, I don't, I don't know if we do, but some of those trees are created in unsafe situations, so I don't know if our, if we have any bylaws that requires, I know we have unsightly premises, I'm going to put an ask in, maybe if we have a dangerous premises as well, from that perspective? Because there are, you know, as much as we want to help property owners clean up their property, 95% of the property owners cleaned up their property, and certainly if there's some needs help, but if there's people who just didn't do it because they didn't want to do it, I feel like they sort of should.
So yeah, it would, it would certainly, well, I should say certainly, it would likely fall under our dangers and unsightly premises and bylaws, so the challenge would be to identify the potential hundreds of them that exist in the city, and then try and follow through with dealing with them individually. I know in, in other communities in Charlestown, for example, you know, they're, they are handing over a lot of that responsibility to the property owner, but they are also, like us, looking for ways to encourage those who don't have the wherewithal to, you know, let us know, and then compile a list, and then we can, you know, take that list to the province and say, you know, we've got X number of residents who simply can't deal with these safety concerns, can you help? So that will be my approach when we reach out.
Good, anyone else on that? I'm just, Counselor Cameron, so we have, I just sort of quickly give you the rundown, I think we mentioned this before, but so this, in our committee of the whole, we basically, councilors put in any item they want on the agenda to talk, it's sort of an open format, and this gives us the chance to have a general conversation about any topic, which way or the other, and we don't always come to make necessarily a decision or pass a resolution or something like that, the more formal elements then come at the council meetings. So just so you're, give me a little, just letting you know what's, what's going on.
Just to add to that conversation, I know that there's people out there struggling to stay in their homes, and, you know, I, I, I do know of a couple of places where there's, trees are down. I don't think they can afford to clean them up themselves. Yes, it is on private property, but I don't think they, they're not capable of doing it themselves, and I don't think they have the capabilities of hiring a big contractor. So those are some issues, and it, you know, it, the neighbors would like to complain, but neighbors are usually nice in the area, so just, just wanted to pass that along, so that if there's any, any kind of a program comes in, we, we have to think of those people that don't have the means to do it, you know, so, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McDougal. So we'll move on now here, item five, I just wanted to put this on as a, a brief update of unhoused population on here. We all know, we talk about housing all the time, because we have a, we have a, a real need for housing across the entire spectrum, from those that are unhoused, those that are trying to find the proper pathway to ownership or stable rent, those that are looking for their first home or their second home for their family, or seniors looking for a safe place to live. We certainly have taken very much a housing-first approach here, and I commend this council, you know, I sort of had a little, made a little list the other day when I was at the FCM, and all the conversation again was on housing. A week and a half, the day before we left there, we were able to announce 24 units, which would create 50 beds, basically, for mothers and children here in our community that's going to get built faster probably than any other rapid housing project across the country, and again, testament to this council for putting the effort in, and the staff over the holidays. You drive around Summerside right now, Summerside is booming, you can see affordable housing all over the city, you can see other types of housing, you see commercial development. We are still not keeping pace with what the need is, but jeez, we're working as hard as we can to try and get there, so I sort of commend this group, we've got our task force, we were talking about housing with the East West Connector. You know, in the last six months, the previous council and this council, support for the Winter Street Men Shelter, we set up a warming center for our most vulnerable on that horribly cold night. We've seen Life House Phase Two be announced here in Summerside within the last six months, which was another 10 units for transitional housing for women and kids. So we're, you know, I really think we are working hard. My general approach is we've got to sort of keep the foot down and keep working hard, because there's a huge need here in Summerside. Our unhoused population is a very difficult one to pin down and identify what the numbers are, because a lot of the people who are unhoused in our community are unhoused in situations where they're on a couch or a trailer, or a lot of people who are living unhoused don't want people to know exactly where they are. But we've been seeing that population increase, as the cost of living in particular has gone up, and the availability of housing and the cost of, the availability of housing has gone down, and the cost of rents and housing has also gone up quite significantly. So we have been working on this, I think, I wanted to put this on to, one, to remind everybody that, you know, as a municipality, it isn't our role to build emergency shelter units and to provide the wraparound services that the individuals who need those units need as well. It is, if we do not provide, as a community, as a broader community, the, the support structures, those wraparound services for individuals and families who need them, then, then we're going to continue to sort of see this issue continue, and people continue to struggle. That very much is a provincial responsibility on both counts, in terms of the emergency shelter piece, and in terms of the support service, the support for the service, social services that need to go with it. Now that said, the province has worked well with us, the federal government is working on this, we are working on this, and I think as difficult as this whole challenge is for all of us, I think there is a solution here, and it is to get more housing built and get more support for individuals in our community. But, so we have reached out, again, we reached out with the previous minister, we were speaking to Minister Lance again last week about the need for emergency shelter services here in Summerside. We have the Winter Street Shelter basically opened and was filled full the next day, and has been so since that time. Life House is very busy, and the issue isn't, isn't going away, it's just not going to happen. So just wanted to give a quick update to council, we also met, I reached out again to Minister Lance, by correspondence and, and, and conversation. And Deputy CAO and I sat down today with the provincial government to help make sure that this was on their radar, it very much is. Our message was, we want to be proactive and helpful, we don't want to wait until things get to a situation where everyone's scrambling, we want to try and make sure we help identify who the community partners are, what kind of options there are going forward, and to do it as quickly as possible. So we left that, I think very much the, the tone in a lot of ways has changed at the provincial government, it was very much, look, we tried a, a previous approach and it didn't necessarily work, we're going to have to do something else, and we recognize that there is a need, and this is a growing need in the community. So I, I wanted to just quick, give folks an update, if there's anything you wanted to ask, give you an opportunity to do that now, you can always ask anytime, but, and also then to just sort of say, look, we'll report back as this goes. I think the reality is, as a city, we're going to have to make sure that we are helping clear the path for any kind of emergency shelter that we can hopefully get the province to set up here in our city, and we've been sort of working with them on some, here are some potential options and ideas, so we don't have a whole lot of time to wait, but I wanted to give you an update on that piece, because I think it's really important. Cool? Next, solar tree update, Counselor McCollman.
Okay, Director Lori had sent some information in, and I'll just very briefly go through it. She did speak to Livingston Steel today, they are the, the folks that are working on the solar tree project, and the solar trees are currently on schedule to be sandblasted and painted. This will be done within the next three weeks, is what she's told. And again, it's being done by Livingston Steel, and they also do the manufacturing of the, I don't know what they're called, but anyway, the lamps. And they will also be installing the tree structures. Both of, both the trees are being located in the park next to the Loyalist Hotel, and both are being installed in the section closer behind the brewery, Evermore Brewery, I believe. The final part will in, will be installed, the solar panels, of the solar panels, and that is being done by Steve Howard's team at Renewable Lifestyles. All of the groundwork has been completed, which was a challenging feat due to the infill used to build up this part of Summerside, the old part of Summerside. The company installing the base screw piles kept running into old wood and could not achieve the torque which, which is needed in order to, to have them very firmly in place. With some additional well-placed screw piles, they were able to get what the engineer was specifying in, in the project drawings, and that was completed and sent by Director Lori Ellis on it. So within the next three weeks, the project should be completed.
The only question, the only question I have, you said they are going to be down by the Loyalist. I thought when we originally spoke about the solar trees, there was going to be one at the Museum of Croust Street here. Is that not, am I wrong in saying that? I thought there was originally a placement of...
It just became a logistical challenge, and I think there were some discussions that it took away from the sort of historical feel of the Armory's building, so a more sort of park, green space location was sought, and then that area was kind of selected as there was already existing power and services in the ground, so costs became a little more reasonable.
Okay, no, it's, it's all moving.
I think.
Achieving the purpose anyway, but I just, I recalled something to do with that when we first discussed, so.
Great. Thank you, Counselor McCollman. Counselor Glant with an update on seniors initiatives.
Trying to get through this, we're taking a coughing fit.
I don't think you can do it, too. Failed, failed already.
I came up with a list of events from June to December for, to bring to council for recommendations for seniors initiative. I've been working with Parkview a little bit, so on the 16th of June, Louise and Johnny will be having a Kaylee from seven to nine, and she is Louise Arsno from Beretchois. July, there will be a Kaylee and a barbecue in the park with entertainment to be determined. They're planning on doing some day trips to the Butterfly House, the Academy Museum, and they're thinking of Palmer Road picnic, but it's a question mark at the present time, because they need a 15-passenger van, and there's 172 members, so I can see a fight happening there. In August, there's going to be another barbecue with entertainment to be determined. Then in November, kind of takes over my part of the portfolio. Remembrance Week starts on October 31st, so we're going to do, last year we did the Evening of Remembrance at the Silver Fox. This year, I would like to have it done at Trinity. I did go to the Fox, their prices are ridiculous, and I'm preferred not to. So I approached Trinity, and they're willing to do it in their auditorium and not charge us, and the ladies will cater the entertainment, and we give them a pro dema. The band will be Phase Two. November the 5th is the church service, which is the fifth year that we've been doing this. We're honoring two veterans this year, it's a brother and a sister. And then on December the 16th, we're going to do a Christmas social at Trinity as well, with Louise Arsno from Beretchois being the entertainment, with other surprises to happen. So I'm kind of bringing these events forward for recommendation, and kind of to see what you thought.
Just quickly, I think, I think anytime we can get our seniors out and active, it's a good thing, so I know Louise and Johnny Ray are definitely entertaining duo, so I'm sure everybody will enjoy that, but again, yeah, anytime we can get our seniors out and look at ways that we can keep them active and engaging in our community and, and spending time with one another, and, and all the residents of our community is, is a good thing, so.
Yep. This is open to the whole public, it's not just for seniors. Yep.
Okay. I, I guess what I was wondering, Counselor Barb, then, when you had mentioned Parkview, if there, if there were going to be any bus trips, or is that just earmarked for the...
No, it's not, no, it's, it's for everyone, but she's trying to get a 15-passenger van, but with 172 members.
You'd need 10.
Right. And there's a lot of liability. I'm kind of working with her, depending on the dates, I'm willing to take some myself, but there's going to be some logistics involved, so we're kind of working out a few kinks. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the dates range from, what's the start, what's the end?
60th of June, which is two weeks from Friday, to December the 16th.
Right. So we could probably...
So we could probably ask for, or they could ask for school buses during some of those.
That's what I was going to suggest, yeah.
The only other thing, I just, no, Councilor Glant, I know we had had some discussion at some point about including lists of activities in utility bills in order to share that information with our older adults or anyone who gets the utility bill, but we have found that seniors are more likely to get a utility bill than, than others. Is that something that's possible to be able to share these events through that, that method of communication?
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Glant. Just a couple of little things left here too. So one, the riveting topic of community structure. A number of months ago, when I started here, I tried to, one, to put this council, community of the whole structure in place. And I sort of set an internal timeline of six months. We established only the committees that were required under the MGA, which essentially is the Finance Committee and our Planning Board. At this time, I think it's sort of six months through, talked to a lot of people, gotten a lot of feedback. I know we've got a lot of, there are a lot of things on the go here right now. There's a lot of balls in the air and so I think it's the right time to put some more structure around the council committees. And I don't, we, I think we had talked about this in the strategic planning discussion, but, so what, I'm not going to do it here because this is not the, we do this at the normally at the council meeting. So what we're going to do is put in, in place so there will be a total, I'm going to add two council committees to the three that already exist. So the three that already exist here is the committee of the whole, we have Finance Committee and we have Planning Board. Finance Committee has started to clarify, and I'm looking at Kristen, but I can't see her behind the corner, clarify what its mandate and process is and I think have set up their regular monthly meetings. So the expectation of all of these committees would be that they would meet once monthly. We have the Finance Committee would meet once monthly. Planning Board would meet once monthly in addition to Planning Board meetings that happen here in chambers for certain items, particularly because there are a number of things we have to do as a city in terms of updating our official plan and there are a number of items that come through Planning Board, particularly right now with all of the housing stuff. I'm also going to strike a bylaw and governance committee, so all bylaw processes and decisions and governance would go through there, and a priorities and planning committee. The basic, I wish I had an org chart, but I'm not very good to be able to draw those types of things. But the way, I'd see it in my head at least, is that council is at the top, under council is mayor and staff. Under there, we have our priorities and planning committee that I try and quit, sort of say is the quarterback. So what the planning priorities committee will do is try and help identify when things need to move where, so that we have, one, so that we have a process for tracking the variety of different initiatives that are started or a variety of different stages of the process. And then to make sure that they come through council in an orderly fashion in a time that gives us the opportunity to work on them. And also then direct particular items through to the other committees, whether they're finance, planning, or bylaw and governance. So I'll try and draw up an org chart or find someone who can help me do that. That will be the first part. We'll do that at the next council meeting, although I think I'm away from the next council meeting, but we'll put that in place and then we'll be able to do the next step, which is the other committees that involve members of the public. So as you see, we put a call out for interested members of the public to be involved. What I'd like to do is then come to, back to council with a clear process on how we go about finding out who wants to be interested, involved in other committees and they could be, we have some that we have to set up anyway, so I think the Heritage Committee is being one. Or it could be welcoming inclusive community committee, or whatever those committees need to be. And I want to try and get, make sure we have the same process for the appointments for members of the public. I said six months ago in this chair that I wanted to make sure, one, to empower counselors to take on the things that they're really interested in and to champion and lead the things that they want to champion and lead and to try and unlock some of the expertise and desire to be part of, of our community, from our community members. So we'll now start on the committee process. We'll start with those five committees. I'll work with staff to figure out what the timing is for each one of those. I'm not going to go through the appointments and names at this point. I think pretty much everyone's staying, but there's a couple of people that will move around just because I want to make sure that everyone is on one committee. And then the priorities and planning committee essentially is the, the one that I chair and then it involves the committee chairs. So it'll make a lot more sense when I share it with you in writing. Until then, I'm going to sort of let you know and we will start structuring the committee meetings and what we'll do from a staff side, like I said, Finance has already done that. Each one of those committees will figure out when works best for them to meet and we'll start following that process, try and integrate that then into either this or probably into the council meeting. So updates will come from those committees and we'll try and, once again, shorten the representative presentations to just the highlights, which I know we tried and then you get there and just you want to read it all, but we'll try and shorten those and then focus in on this, this piece here. So I wanted to give you an update on that so that in two weeks' time, no one gets surprised. And also it's a really good time to do that now that we have Councilor Cameron here with us and I think we're, we're all, we're all, we're all ready to go. So any questions on that wholly confusing process?
I do.
Great.
I do. I just noticed.
So what I, so trying to envision that, from here, Norma, is there would be five council committees. We involve, with counselors only on them, committee of the whole, priorities and planning, finance, planning board, and bylaw and governance. There will be other committees, so it would be, could be culture, heritage, an ad hoc committee. We do have one or two effectively already. We have our ad hoc storm water management committee and the mayor's task force is, would also fall under one of those because it has a mandate and a timeline. And then those, so we'll put the first, the council committees in place and then we'll start populating the other committees of the city. Does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Okay.
It makes sense. I'm just, I'm just wondering how we're going to fit everything in, if I may say that respectfully, because there is a lot.
Yep.
And we've also cut back from having two people to only one representative. And I, I think we have to look at both sides of the equation, that, you know, we, we are being asked to do things, but we also have to take in consideration the staff as well because they work very hard on what they're doing and I don't want to send the wrong message to the staff. That, that, you know, it's, it's changing in their roles in what they do.
Absolutely, and I certainly did talk to staff about that and this is one of the things that, through those conversations that we're trying to put in place, is to have some more structure so people, there are set timelines on things that, you know, it's not all 18 balls in the air. We can spread them out and know when we're going to get to certain things. And then I'll also speak to all counselors to find out as we go into the citizen committee piece or the additional committees that involve counselors and members of the community, what your time commitments can be as well, right? So I would say if there's a, if there's a culture committee, yes, we want to have the representative for culture involved there, but they don't, doesn't have to be, but that would be one that makes sense in the lines. The, I think what has happened here is we do also have a series of departments in the city that run the nuts and bolts of the cities. We have a lot of initiatives on the go that don't fit one particular department. So this gives us an opportunity to have conversations that overlap a variety of departments and maybe have different people being involved. I don't want it to get to a point where we've got like 330 committees and, you know, you want it to be valuable and you want to have good use of people's time, so that's why we would sort of do them methodically and start rolling them out one into the next. Okay? Great. Next is Heritage Committee, Councilor Ron, you had that on.
Yeah, I guess it's sort of fitting that it falls under, or falls after what you just spoke on, but I guess it was sort of back in March, I had a member of what, I don't know if it's our current Heritage Committee or our previous one, we're not kind of sure what the deal is at the moment, but they were just curious as to basically the status of that Heritage Committee with respect to, you know, what members are on it. Will there be new members? What's their term length? What's the mandate of that? So they were just kind of wondering specifically on that Heritage Committee because I know there was at least one, maybe two, trying to think who's on it, but residents that serve on that committee, so they were just kind of curious as to where they stand now that the new council's sort of taken over since the last term, if that committee still exists or if it still has the same goals or objectives or if we have any specific programs or direction that we'd like to give them. Just sort of, just sort of a, just a quick update as to where that Heritage Committee, I guess, currently stands, if it still stands.
Yeah, I think the Heritage Committee has been placed under the Heritage Bylaw. The Heritage Bylaw was adopted by council on October 17th of 2022, parking the, I guess we should probably at some point should have a broader discussion about what role and what activities council undertakes during the course of an election campaign. Because a lot of municipalities effectively stop their council meetings but for emergency requirements during election campaigns. And the councillor, the heritage board was one that has come back up. Sort of talked about whether, there's some confusion as to whether the current board exists or they have to get reappointed every term. And so this was one, to be honest, is one of the drivers to get the council committee structure in place so that we can start addressing those. I did mention it because it's on the top of the to-do list from a committee that involves members of the public and really want, again, make sure that the process is consistent and fair for all residents, not that it hasn't been, but though that any resident who wants to get involved understands what the, the process is on how we essentially appoint residents to a variety of committees. So I can report back at the next council meeting and I, I think we'll probably have that resolved by then. Last item for the night, timelines in response, bylaw complaints, follow-up and updates, Councilor McCollman.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to bring up a couple of points and I don't mean it in any kind of a way other than being realistic. I'm just looking personally as one councillor, since about mid-May, there's been about 12 residents within my ward that have had complaints. I've heard from, from them on various, various points that are very important to them. I know those same residents have talked to yourself, Your Worship. I know that it, I, I have sent out emails probably to keep my fellow counselors in the loop and Summerside Police Services, whomever that I felt needed to be aware of it. And I think a lot of counselors are running into that type of situation. My point that I'm trying to draw is that I know that everybody within the city, counselors and staff alike, are busy. We're trying to do a lot of different things. But I think many times, most of the matters have been discussed above and beyond, anything from rats to unsightly properties to safety concerns, there's been so many different things. And I think what happens is when we get the initial contact, it, there's almost like a silo created as far as trying to get the message directed to the correct person, which we know is our CAO. But what happens is in a span of that timeframe, I think that we need to, to take a look at, and I'm not saying it as any kind of an authority, I just see that there's a bottleneck. And what happens within that first 24 to 48 hours, residents are wondering, has anybody heard what my concern is? What's happening with it? Is there anything taking place? And I think sometimes we're all in that situation. So my reason or rationale for putting this in is that we have spent, as a municipality, a lot of money for policy bylaw review. We've spent a lot of oxygen time talking and debating about those things. But I still find what happens is we are in limbo in a situation where when it comes in, the staff are trying to do and they're trying to task the situation, but we're still getting the calls and I find that there's so much handling of one complaint between the councillor and the department and the emails and the phone calls that you get to a place of frustration where you're wondering, is anything happening? And, and the residents feel like we as a council are not doing anything about it. We've heard comments about having a bylaw officer to trying to get involved or trying to get the supports out there with organizations. But I just feel that there's too much time and I know people are busy and they've got other parts of their job description that they're doing. But what happens is there's so much time working around the bottleneck that it, it becomes like it's in a silo and, and we're lost, or at least I'm lost. I don't know where it's at and I don't like to bother people. And I feel that sometimes we're in that situation of doing administrative work that really takes a lot of time and we're not getting to the end result in a quick enough turnaround time. And I'm not talking like doing it in with six hours. I just feel that we have to have something tightened up so that it's a little bit more streamlined and that's why I have it on there. And I'm not nitpicking at any one person, department, director. I think it's, it's a, a situation that involves everyone, but we need to tighten that somehow because it is very frustrating for the resident and sometimes residents, I know we're supposed to ask them to do a complaint form, I am telling you honestly, many of them legitimately do not want to because they, they feel for retaliation and those kinds of things and we have to respect that because there are bylaws in place that say that if this is happening, this is happening, then there, there is some type of a bylaw infringement. So that's why I have it on there and I do. I feel for the residents, but I also feel for us as a municipality where we're, we've got a lot of balls in the air, as we say, but we are trying hard to get to a resolution, but sometimes there's something being missed and it's not intentional. So that's why I have that on there.
Not, not to be smart, but I'm being serious. I think we need a bylaw officer. I don't know if anybody heard me say that before, but it's obvious, there's, anyway, hopefully we get some applicants, somebody gets hired because.
And just to follow up, Norma, you and I have had this discussion before. I have no issue and I have filled the form out for people in the past because people are hesitant to. They want to be good neighbors, but they sometimes might see things that aren't right and have to be taken care of and they don't want the retaliation or they're fearful of, you know, being looked at as nitpicky or so on, but if it is a bylaw issue, then it should be looked at. So I'm there, we're there for our residents, so I don't feel that us filling out the form on somebody's behalf is an issue. If it's a bylaw issue, then it's a bylaw issue. It doesn't matter who fills it out. That's just mine. And yes, bylaw officer.
And I guess, Carrie, I was going to say the same thing because I recently had a number of issues and they, they don't feel it's their, their role to do that, it's your role, basically. And because of the issues, some of the issues, and, you know, whether it's lawn grass or whatever, they just don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor. And so anyway, I, I agree with you on the bylaw complaint form, so, thanks.
Yeah, certainly, I totally agree as well. I think we probably need a complaint system. I often look at it from a, maybe this is the business out of me, you know, we spend a lot of taxpayer dollars with looking into going, going through a whole bunch of hoops to answer questions that. to answer questions, that we can maybe have a much better system to get back to people on. I guess we also have to understand what the nature is of the complaints, right? Sometimes we get complaints because people are, something is bothering them, or they think there's a bylaw infraction. Sometimes we get people who call with complaints because they haven't been able to get what they want. I get a lot of those as well, which is, that's not, we get a lot of people, I'll, I'll call the mayor, he'll help, you know, this, this is something that, there are rules here to follow, and, you know, that's, that's what they're there for. So there's, there's two paths to it, and I'm totally with you, I feel like we spend quite a bit of time, I think, I almost think, we should have kept Greg, maybe, you almost want an engineer to understand what that system is. And again, I think if someone is letting, myself as a resident, if I'm letting my councillor know that there's something that is inconsistent with what the bylaws are in our community, I, I think that is sufficient. They don't see any need to fill out a complaint. I've often said that that's, you don't have to complain that somebody is, is breaking the law or something, you just have to call the police and let them know. Not that this is the, the same level, but yeah, I certainly am hoping that the bylaw officer hiring process is going well, and that it would be a bylaw and complaints officer, and I think one of the, hopefully, one of the first things. Again, we have one employee, but we can also direct our CAO to say, look, this is a concern, we are, wanna see a proper complaint system and proactive enforcement on, on bylaws.
And, and I think, if I can just clarify, what I mean by a bottleneck is just basically what you're saying, the complaint, like I'm thinking of one in particular where there was a discussion with, with our Summerside Police Services, which, which I felt was very thorough, better than, than what we could give, as far as the rationale behind a decision made. And then I know you received a call, Your Worship, I know I received a call, and so sometimes I just feel like it's like a fast track. Who can I, who can I get to fast track this situation? But the fact of the matter is, if there is a policy, or if there's some type of a, a reason why it's happening the way it is, I think sometimes what happens in explaining that, that frustrates the residents as well. They think that we're just, you know, putting it on hold, when actually there is, there is a, a step that's being followed.
Yeah, and that person, I think if it's the bylaw and complaints officer, that person needs to be understanding of what the ways they can also help. So in some cases, it, it isn't necessarily, I think the one you're referring to, councillor, or a number of phone calls, and there still are, but I was able to look up something that was in the public domain and direct them to the proper, it would be a third party, not the police, not the city. And now they are working with that third party to get done what they need to get done. Now, I'm still CC'd on every email, so I don't know if we're fully there, but again, and be able to then identify, we often get two, we get similar, the same complaint for the same thing, and we go about, you know, with some regular, you know, formality in how we sort of answer those questions. And it's particularly challenging for someone like me, like I've been here for six months, or Councilor Glant, or Morrison, some of these things have, often will come to my attention, and then the last staff, and they'll say, oh yeah, yeah, no, we know about that, don't, this isn't new, right? So a better process would be very helpful. Great. Thank you, councillor, and we have staff here, so. One of the committee members put an update on the Storm Water Management Committee that I will, I'm away, I'm representing the city of Bereschoir at an event, Atlantic, but I will send a video message. I'm, I'm not away with intent, I asked to get this, this public meeting as soon as possible, and it happened to coincide with that, so I'm not, I'm not fleeing.
Okay, so yeah, no, the, just to, just to let people know that are possibly listening, that we are holding, I don't know what we're calling it, but it's a public forum feedback question-answer town hall type event, just regarding the whole storm water management slash ditch-in-fill program. So that is happening Thursday, June fifteenth, Credit Union Place, at six-thirty. It'll be in the Veterans Convention Center, I believe. We just decided to hold it there, just in anticipation that council chambers would be packed a little too full, because we are anticipating a, a lot of interest in that, so. Anybody that's interested in our program, or that has questions or concerns, that's gonna be the night to, to come and, and give your, give your say. So it's June fifteenth, it's a week from this Thursday, at six-thirty, Credit Union Place.
Thank you, councillor, anything else? Okay, folks, we will adjourn, thank you very much.